All right, welcome everybody to our board meeting of the Vancouver School Board. Tonight's meeting is a study session. It is Tuesday, November 29 at 5:30. We are going to go ahead and get started with roll call. Director Zacker?
I'm here.
Director Smith?
Here.
Director Sproul?
Here.
And Director Zavala?
Yeah.
Perfect, I am also here, so we are all in attendance. We are going to go ahead and get started tonight with our study session. We have a couple items on the agenda. The first item on our study session agenda is an update on curriculum and instruction with the PLC update. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jim Gray and Carrie Van Ostrin to share that information.
Good evening, everybody. It's such an honor to be here. It's also in a special honor to be here once again with Carrie as we model essentially the collaborative process to transform our district and improve student outcomes. We wanted to be here today to essentially give you a PLC reboot update. And initially, this first slide is more about kind of a rehashing of where we've been and a reminder. So essentially, we've been doing PLCs for about 10 to 12 years as a district. They have been sporadically successful across the district and a lot of great work has happened. When the equity policy was passed, it really put into place equitable outcomes for all students, which meant consistency across the system and a deep embedded efficiency. So really, the focus for us in this work is creating a cultural support that provides job embedded and relevant professional development for our teachers. Essentially, teachers teaching one another and being the most prepared in front of our students. Now, obviously, student outcomes are a priority, but really the focus in this reboot is really establishing that the PLC is not just what happens in the classroom. It is the entirety of our system from top to bottom, including the board and the classroom. So as you see there, there's the four teams we've talked briefly about. One of the things that we've been working diligently on is really clarifying what those roles are. So as an example, Jeff, if you click on the infographic link there, you'll be able to see hopefully that these are some examples of what the school board, the role the school board might do as we move through this process. So collaboratively develops operating principles, sets direction and focus areas for the district, focuses on learning, establishes short and long-term improvement goals. So that's how the board models the PLC process, all the way down to the teacher PLC team, which is develop team norms and accountability protocols, focus on learning. But overlaying this is how we operate with one another. And in short, how do we inform down, solicit feedback and inform up and make choices as a system that best impacts our teachers in the classroom? So this is just an example of some of the work. And this actually is one of the documents the team put together, specifically one of our teacher leaders on the district level PLC team. So just wanted to show that to you. Go ahead, Jeff. So there's the four essential teams. And Carrie and I are part of the district PLC oversight team that essentially functions as the district level guiding coalition. We are trying at our level with VEA membership, VEA leadership, district leadership and admin, building level admins, really model the collaborative process that we want to see at both the building and the classroom level. And our hope is to facilitate input and communication up and down the system. Some of the things we're doing ongoing in the system, as far as training goes, is at the board level, one of our board members is going to be joining us in, I believe, late February, early March at the PLC summit, which will be an incredible experience to get really deep into that work and learning. We are also planning on bringing some of the board members to some PLCs to see what that looks like at the ground level. At the district level, as you know, we are involved in the Wassa PLC project throughout the state of Washington that we partner with other districts. And then the building, the classroom level, we are, we've partnered with Solution Tree, essentially the international level gurus on PLCs to really provide a building principal and a teacher co-lead in the building ongoing guiding coalition training. So I know Carrie's going to talk a little bit about where we're at and some of the tension points. So I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Thanks, Jim, and thank you to the board and Dr. Snell for having us again. Carrie Van Ostrin, VEA president. Hopefully, the graphic that was incorporated in these slides is also a visual reminder of our intentionality in this reboot, that flow and steady progress is the goal. Trying to be intentional as Jim reinforced with communication through those four teams back and forth, really methodical planning. And so actually Jimmy and I came from a pre-planning Zoom prior to tonight's board meeting in anticipation of a coaching session that's scheduled for Friday for our district level guiding coalition members, just to help bridge some of what we're preparing for our building level guiding coalition colleagues coming up. So a lot of vernacular to keep track of, but we're happy to answer questions throughout. The slow and steady progress really is a reminder, though, that while it's challenging to resist, we are doing our best to resist the rush in response to a clear sense of urgency for student and staff needs certainly, but we want to get it right this time around and appreciate the collaborative approach thus far. So the ongoing collaboration that we've engaged in as a district guiding coalition or the oversight team that you referenced, as Jim mentioned, we're collaborating with Solution Tree around coaching support, where we're able to kind of prepare and respond to input we've received from those guiding coalition colleagues, the building administrator and educator that was identified through a collaborative process at the building level. And the five-year plan document that you see linked there, Jeff, if you'd be willing to click on that as a friendly reminder of our long-term plan. And when it loads, if you'd be kind enough to skim down slowly from those five commitments to see our implementation sequence, thank you. And you'll see for the 2223 school year, an emphasis on training in particular for those three key areas that you saw captured on the previous slide around guiding coalition development. So the culture of collaboration, essential standards work so that we're providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum and then determining what progress monitoring looks like in alignment with the equity policy Jim referenced previously, so that there is that data alongside communication. We're bridging across those district level teams to and from the school board and superintendent level. Thank you, Jeff, if you'd be willing to scale back to the slides, please. Thank you. So from a progress standpoint, we have now successfully completed three of the five scheduled trainings for our building guiding coalition leads. And as I mentioned, those are a building administrator and an educator co-lead that was selected collaboratively by staff and by admin to partner in that work, modeling that same PLC process for PLC teams at the building level, just as Jim and I and the other district guiding coalition team members are attempting to do at the district level. So some of the soft emphasized areas include really building trust and shared ownership so that these are equally leveled partners and building level leadership and engaging in the collaborative process so that we're building up the team dynamic at the building level and candor, vulnerability and direct communication around pain points is something that we've attempted to create a safe atmosphere for and really appreciated direct feedback from guiding coalition co-leads. In particular, some of those pain points have come up around time, what meaningful engagement in this work requires from a time standpoint, what that might look like from a scheduling standpoint in particular, and then recognizing that we have current contract language that really articulates where we've been in the PLC process compared to where we'd like to go next means that there are natural negotiations implications because the work naturally overlaps with wages, hours and working conditions for our educators. But in that five-year plan, referencing that this was the training year for guiding coalitions in particular, by the end of the 2223 year, our goal is that each building would have a coalition of leaders, not just the co-leads, but representatives from across PLC teams in place to help drive work at a leadership level, shared leadership at the building. And that guiding coalition would then be engaging in directing some of building experience beginning in the 2324 school year, the implementation year that you saw referenced in that five-year plan document. So with that slow and steady progress in mind, our intention and priority is to continue going slow so that eventually we can go fast. In particular, we've slowed some momentum around the essential standards, that second item you see listed. And that was directly in response to feedback we received from guiding coalition co-leads that, you know, we're getting our feet wet with understanding around the guiding coalition structure and process. And, you know, let's bite off what we can feasibly chew to start. So we are reviewing prior work the district has engaged in around identifying essential standards, which admittedly has been a more robust process at the K5 level, slightly less so at the middle school level and then even less so at the high school level, especially based on some of the momentum lost during COVID closure period. But because that was meaningful work conducted previously, we don't want to dishonor it, but we also recognize that students may be in a different place at this time as our staff. And so there's an interest in reviewing prior work while also contemplating revisions that are driven from educator perspective across the K12 system. In order to do that, we will likely need time and funding to bring educators together, whether that is during winter, spring of the school year for a training experience and a revision process or as we collaborate at the district guiding coalition level. We're looking at other creative solutions that would still be efficient and meaningful, but maybe a little bit more manageable to engage feedback, but also drive the work forward. One area that we have explored, as I alluded to in the pre-meeting, Jim and I shared with district guiding coalition members was how we might be able to bring back to educators a more narrowed process for pinpointing what's considered a spiraling standard or two that we see in different iterations all through the K12 system, but certainly just at a higher developmental level as it works today up. And we recognize that iReady is an access point K12 at this stage that may support the progress monitoring process for school board based on the ask in alignment with equity policy as well. So some of that is still in the works as we've slowed our processes down, but really appreciate the grace and flexibility so that we can make meaningful collaborative progress with our building guiding coalition co-leads because that input and feedback going both directions has been most meaningful and very well received, both at the district level and at the building level as well. Jeff, if you could scale to the next slide, please. Thank you. So following winter break, we have our next guiding coalition training session scheduled in late January. And the goal between now and then is to be able to review some of the November meeting inputs and make sure that we're responsive during the session that we host with those co-leads in January. And that's one of the roles that the district guiding coalition plays in that kind of two-way communication process that Jim illustrated with the four different levels of PLC work for the district. And just as Jim and I are attempting to model this collaboration and facilitation with a VEA and district hat on, we're asking guiding coalition co-leads, administrator and educator to model that same collaborative process with staff so that they receive some ongoing context and updates from the guiding coalition experience they've had thus far and so that co-leads solicit input from building educators that can then come back to us at the district level for continuing to fine tune our trajectory. So I'm glad that Jim mentioned a couple of really meaningful opportunities coming up for direct board of directors to plug into, whether that's through participation in the PLC summit learning opportunity, essentially your version of training in year one alongside the rest of us and then being able to see some PLCs at work as well. We hope that that can be a meaningful experience that helps just re-solidify or recalibrate what the two-way communication might look like for the board superintendent level to the district guiding coalition level. And then whether it's connected to the PLC summit, the observation of a PLC during the shared space on these calls or other conversations that we might schedule, we would certainly welcome board questions and input to help reinforce again that two-way communication system. I wouldn't say that Jim and I have any official solidified asks of the board at this time, but I do just want to reiterate, especially with my VEA hat on, an awareness for the board and superintendent around ongoing feedback from our guiding coalition colleagues around time that it will require for us to engage in this meaningful work. And then again, with my VEA hat, the implications around negotiations because there will be anticipated working conditions adjustments as we move forward through this process.
Thank you both for sharing. Board directors, do you have questions? Kyle, Director Sproul?
Oh, sorry, I thought we were moving on. I do have one, but I don't need to go first, anyone else? Okay, so in the refinement of the essential standards, because there has been work in the last few years of kind of establishing what those essential standards are. And I totally understood what you were saying about just refining that and reflecting where our students are now, post-pandemic, where the staff is now. It seems like the essential standards are going to be a living document. I mean, it seems like there's going to be constant refinement towards that. So the structure we're doing now to identify, is that a process that will roll forward? So there will kind of continuously be feedback? Or will we define a set essential standards? Because I guess what I'm saying is if we've just defined them, but we're doing it again, because things, our environment has changed, are we going to identify essential standards in a way that's more nimble or more of a live template, I guess, moving forward? Does that make sense? Maybe in my question.
I'm happy to respond unless you'd prefer.
Well, I think, I think just as a starting point at a high level, the focus is in on support before accountability. So essentially capturing teacher voice in an ongoing process. So as we look at what student needs are, teacher voice is really leading the way instead of a system of accountability without, and asking teachers, what do you need to continue to get better at your craft and what do students need? So for instance, if we were just putting standards in front of teachers, what's the training involved in breaking down a standard, developing unit plans, that type of training? That goes parallel with also identifying those standards. So I think I would start with at least that high level of a response. Kyle, Carrie, you want to pile on?
Yeah, thanks, Jim. I think the two pieces I would add are that the feedback we've received through our Solutions Tree coach is that that nimble process would be in alignment with PLC best practice. And I think by starting our reboot with this intentional communication from one level of the system to another, that should be a cornerstone of this work from 2023 onward. And so I think that will be the most meaningful way for us to remain nimble in refining so long as we are soliciting educator input and pairing our asks with support preceding them.
No, that makes sense. I mean, I think that's what I was, I was hoping for is that this is more focused on setting up a new process and the essential standards might change year to year depending on where students are. I mean, I guess I'm saying that we're, we're about, we're, we get this opportunity to do a reboot. So but in three years, we don't want to like kind of pause and do a whole new refinement of essential standards, like that that would be a continual process as part of our PLC process. So that, that's, I guess, what I'm questioning is, and that sounds, I'm understanding things correct. Yeah.
And I think the goal is to receive input from board directors, especially if that is a reinforcement of an ask, then I
No, I just, I mean, yeah, I just wanted like the reboot and then doing the essential standards the first time I heard about it. So that was my, my inquiry, I guess.
Sure. Right, and period mention, I think this is pretty, one of the balances that we have, we have right now is balancing the work that's happened before and honoring that work and not starting from square one and at least having an essential standards that spirals up through the system that we can essentially, if we're going to progress monitor standards, but at least we can communicate that here's where our district is focused. And so if we're going to pay attention, maybe this is an area we can really focus in on and our teachers and show that the amazing work of the teachers are doing and then provide and have teachers provide feedback on what they need to, to essentially get better at this process. So and then model that process at all for the essential teams. So that's the balance we have right now.
Thank you, Director Sproul, for the question and Carrie and Jim for responding. Are there other questions related to this item tonight? We appreciate you both being here and know that we'll continue these periodic updates as, as we progress through this year and the coming years in that five-year plan. So with that, Director Burrows, would you like me to, okay, our next item, I'll share the screen again, is around our professional staff goals. And I would like to welcome Janelle Ephraim. And I think Andre Harganani is going to help and they have some guests here this evening. So I'll turn it over to you, Janelle.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schnell and our board directors. Good to see you all this evening. I just want to, you know, first, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and share an update around our professional learning and how we're elevating student voice in Vancouver public schools. Would you mind going to the next slide? As Dr. Schnell previously stated, I'm Janelle Ephraim and I am one of our executive directors for Schools Learning and Equity here in VPS. And I'm accompanied by a few colleagues, Andre Harganani, he's the director of equity, and Darby Mead, he's a principal at ITech, and three amazing students, Olivia, Malia and Elijah. And they're going to have an opportunity to share with us a little later. We'll start by sharing some professional learning update and feedback around the intercultural development inventory as well as share some information regarding professional learning that our leaders and some of our teachers are engaging in this year. You'll also hear an update from schools about how they're leveraging student voice through our student advisory teams as well as some other mechanisms that they're using and have, like I said, an opportunity to hear from our students. Next slide, please. Our approach to this work is really multifaceted and we recognize that it's a journey for everyone in our system. With that being said, it's important for us to recognize this journey should influence three core areas and that self-relationship and systems. And the self-work really helps us to inform our interpersonal relationships. And this allows us to ultimately have an organizational impact so that we can create a system and cultures of inclusion and that promote belonging for our students. For these reasons, we have asked folks to engage in the intercultural development inventory. Next slide, please. As you may recall, back when we did our district-wide equity audit that was conducted by the Valverde Group and UPD, we began to assess our leadership, excuse me, and instructional teams' readiness to address issues of equity by asking them to participate in the intercultural development inventory. You'll hear me reference it as the IDI this evening. And basically, what that inventory has done is it has informed the professional learning as well as inform the areas in which we want to focus as far as supporting our students and teachers. All right, for our viewers who are unfamiliar with the IDI, I just want to share a little bit about what the IDI is. The IDI is a cross-culturally valid and reliable instrument that measures the way an individual or group experiences differences and similarities. And this, what you're viewing right now is the IDI continuum. And this continuum has five different orientations. It has denial, polarization, minimization, acceptance and adaptation. And this instrument is not measured, it's not really a measurement of what you know or don't know, but it really describes how you are currently approaching cultural differences and gives you direction in which, in ways in which you can develop more intercultural competence. Okay, none of the stages are good or bad. They're just informative. Next slide, please. Looks like I might be missing, oh, thank you. All right. So what you're viewing now is a slide that really shows how this particular inventory is internationally normed and where people generally fall after taking this inventory. And so basically, like I said previously, it focuses on how we interact with similarities and differences. And so finding commonalities are easy ways for us to begin to build relationships. But how we balance these commonalities and differences is really what this particular continuum will help us understand and it describes. So the first stage you see on this continuum is the denial stage. And generally, 2.4% of folks who engage in this inventory fall within that stage. And this is an early stage. And when folks are in this stage, they see differences in, as a big and broad categories and mostly because they've not had a lot of opportunities to interact with people or cultures that are very different from them. And that can commonly happen when you're growing up in an area around people who are very similar to you. Okay, the next stage is polarization. That's the next orientation. And orientation, excuse me, the polarization orientation, it does recognize that you come in contact with more differences and you recognize that differences do exist. But because of limited exposure to differences, it's common that you would categorize differences using stereotypes or judgment. The next orientation is minimization. Minimization is where most people fall on this particular continuum. And it's a place where really where we over emphasize commonalities and sometimes to the point to where we ignore differences. And it's not that folks don't see differences, they just choose to not focus on the differences and focus on the commonalities. It's also a place where you see political correctness, color blindness, age blindness, gender blindness. And yeah, all of those things are very common in that particular orientation. The next orientation you see is acceptance. 13.5% of folks who take this typically fall into the accepted stage. And in this stage, that's where folks begin to see difference and accept difference, not necessarily in a non-judgmental way that you may have seen with polarization. And it's important to note that when you're in the accepted stage, that doesn't mean that you agree with everything that is different from you, but what it means is that you understand and accept that different folks have different perspectives. And then the last stage on And then the um last stage on the continuum is adaptation. And um adaptation is is really a stage where you apply what you understand about other cultures and where you're able to start, begin to um um build cross-cultural uh bridges. All right, uh, next slide, please. All right, I'm gonna um share uh the results from uh the IDI that um the aggregate result from the IDI that um approximately uh thirteen hundred um of our employees had an opportunity to participate in, and this is both teachers and leaders. Okay, so you'll see um the previous slide that I shared with you was really um how this particular inventory is normed, but this is how we show up in Vancouver Public Schools. So one percent of the folks who participated in in the inventory um uh saw differences at a denial stage, um eleven percent polarization, fifty-eight percent minimization, twenty-three ex- percent acceptance and five percent adaptation. And this is really something that we can uh celebrate uh when you compare it to um the international norms that we saw on the previous slide. Because the goal is really about uh moving um moving our folks from um from one end of the continuum to the other. And uh the closer we come to the uh to the uh end of the continuum where you experience um acceptance and adaptation. Excuse me, that's where um we begin to see our students and staff who experience excuse me, a system, a system where um they belong. Next slide, please. All right, we'll continue to um use uh the IDI for uh teachers who are uh new to our system as well as leaders who are new to our system. Um, they'll have an opportunity to engage in uh the same equity uh training modules that our folks engaged in uh last year, um module A, B and C where the IDI is the first uh part of that. Um, we also will continue to use this information to um inform future professional development. And next slide. And once these folks uh take our inventory, we really want them to be thinking about um these particular uh reflective que- reflection questions, excuse me. Um, we want them to think about how how might uh they as an individual, um, how might their worldview manifest in the way that they engage with difference? And what are the implica- implications of these results uh for their work? Uh, both internally and with um external stakeholders. Uh, next slide, please. All right. So as we explore these implement implications, uh, we also are coupling this exploration with tools that will support our community as they journey towards intercultural competence. Um, so our leaders have had an opportunity to to participate in this book study this year. Uh, many of our our schools are also engaging in this book study. Um, sites that are not engaging in the book study this year will um engage in it in the following year. Um, it, we are using a train the trainer model here on this. Um, if you could go to the next slide, I just wanna highlight a few things that um that are uh particularly impactful um from our book study. All right, may need to click a few more times so that we can um, I'm not seeing a total view of that particular um quadrant, but I'll go ahead and speak to it. Thank you.
Sorry, so that the slide that you want, it's I'm having some, it's not loading for me and slow. Is this where you want it to be?
That is where I would like for it to be. So um, I'm just gonna try to explain explain um what the visual um should look like. So um basically what you see here is um a diagram that has a four quadrant. And um, thank you, there we go. And um they include uh excluded, segregated, integrated and included. And so really, the students in our system have experienced uh all of these quadrants and and some of our students even experience all of these quadrants uh throughout the course of their day. And so um really where we want, where we ideally want all of our students and staff to experience is that um upper right-hand portion of the quadrant that included. And that's where uh we want them to experience high access and unconditional belonging. And so how do we get there? If you don't mind going to the next slide, uh another highlight from the text of of the book study is the dignity framework. And so um we understand that um again, this is a journey and we wanna make sure that folks in our system really have the tools that they need to uh successfully uh create environments of unconditional belonging, high access and unconditional belonging. And uh this framework um allows us to um, you know, engage our community and honor their dignity. Um, it it encourages disposition of openness, uh listening, empathy and patience. Um, it highlights treating students and our community fairly, affirming who they are, validating them, accepting them um as well as encourages um it just using an appreci- appreciative approach as far as appreciating differences and uniqueness, uh presuming competence and positive intent, building partnerships with our community and um ensuring that we repair harm or and restore relationships. And so um Andre, our director of equity is going to um speak with you about um how we're applying some of this learning as we elevate student voice. And then we're going to hear from um Olivia, Malia and Elijah. Andre?
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Andre Harganani, the director of equity. Thank you, Janelle. Uh, so as we grow in our intercultural development and want to honor the dignity of our students, uh one of our action steps is to increase the opportunities for student voice in our district. And so I'm gonna share some of the progress we've made. Uh, as you know, uh, we do panorama surveys. Um, in addition, we do um other surveys and padlets and a variety of ways to collect student voice. Uh, even through art as in that uh example, uh celebrating Diwali. But one of our big pushes this year has been in developing the student equity advisory teams. Uh, so the equity mentors have been working with the um administrators at each of the school sites so that there's a team of students that are representative of the uh overall population where we can get student voice and input. Uh, and then amplify that student voice, sharing it with the uh student-centered equity teams which are composed of the staff members uh with the, you know, at staff meetings and other committees so that it helps inform our decisions. Uh, so as we're serving students, we're hearing input from them. Uh, do you wanna look at the next slide? And so, so far in this movement, uh, we have seventy-two percent of our schools have student equity advisory teams. And of course, the goal is to get to a hundred percent. Um, but as this is a new uh initiative and new entities in our schools, you can see that we're already making some good progress as we're um developing these groups at our schools. And the students are uh excited that we're hearing from and we're already getting um a lot of good input from the students. Uh, so if you look at the next slide, it shows some of the trends that we're seeing um as we try to group them together. And one of the things that we're hearing a lot from students is cultural awareness and increasing that um both amongst the teachers and the staff, uh but also amongst their peers. Um, and how can we really honor um the differences rather than minimizing the differences, right? Rather than them trying to have to fit in to a culture that was developed before uh with maybe a less diverse student body, but how do we make sure that we are developing cultures that incorporate each and every student in there? And then also, uh, how is that cultural awareness being reflected in what's happening in their core instruction? And so there's already been some shifts where there's more culturally relevant materials being used. Um, and so already we're seeing little inklings of progress that um that we can do immediately. And then looking at how do we uh use this information to make larger structural change in the long term? Another thing that came up a lot was about compassion. Um, students wanna be known. They wanna be accepted for who they are, right? And uh they're they're really wanting trusting relationships. Uh, which sometimes they feel like is lacking in some cases right now. And so that is coming through. And also when there are situations where um maybe they've acted out in in ways that they shouldn't have acted out, they want the opportunity to tell their story. They wanna, they wanna make sure that their side is being heard as well. And uh so already we're starting to make some progress there. Where we're looking at how are we approaching relationships among students, how are we approaching relationships between adults and students? Um, so that we can uh recognize the multitude of sides to what's happening in the schools. Another one is hands-on learning or some sort of private learning where it's a little more active uh learning rather than um just sort of sitting and taking it in lecture style. And so um there's been some progress ready with that, uh where teachers are learning some UDL strategies. And um there's already been some sort of instructional shifts. A lot more that we can do as we look at it bigger picture. And then um better lunches came up, right? I think lunch is the perennial thing that uh that is is always going on, but um there have been some interesting maybe uh new things about, you know, considering vegetarian diets and some of the um, the other cultural issues with the food. So um some of that has been bubbling up as well. And then um what we would like to do is actually give you the opportunity to hear from some students themselves. So you're not just listening from Janelle and me, but uh you're uh also hearing from some of the students. And so um Janelle introduced the students and uh this is the question we figured uh might be good uh for them to answer is how is your school elevating student voice through the use of the student advisory and student-centered equity teams?
Thank you, thank you, Andre. Um, we're gonna go ahead and um ask Olivia to get us started and uh in response uh to the question, maybe talk about how her school is elevating student voice through the use of the teams.
Hi, um, sorry, this is a really bad time for my dog to get really hyper. So if you're barking, that's uh, it's my bad, but um I'm gonna start, uh, I think me and me and um my fellow student, uh, Malia are gonna trade off a couple times. Um, explaining some things that we've been working on, but I'm gonna start with um how we've been looking at panorama feedback for our school um about student inclusion, um sense of belonging, student relationships with teachers. Um, our panorama survey kind of covers all of those. So um when our team first um kinda got together last year, we all took a look at the panorama survey and started brainstorming ideas for, you know, the why of of certain feedback we got. Um, also thinking about how student-teacher relations could be improved, how student belonging could be improved. Uh, of course, we we talked amongst ourselves of our own experiences with inclusion and things like that. So that is one thing that we have worked on um in our equity group. And then if Malia wants to take over for the next point.
Yeah, so the next thing that we covered was identity-based bullying and um it, for us, it was really important to keep include people of color because you can't really get their point of view without asking them directly. So by including them, we covered all the things that maybe they felt that they were missing out on or things that we forgot to include without looking at others' perspectives. So we made a slide deck trying to teach other people that sometimes kids don't know that they're doing something wrong. Sometimes if they think it's just a silly joke or something that is just something that's going around or something that they find funny, but we created a slide deck teaching anyone that there are differences and there are fine lines to what is mean, to what is impolite and to what is bully- bullying. So hopefully, we can get the presentation into Advos or Advocacies in our school to teach other children about um the differences and what is considered mean, what isn't considered impolite and what is considered bullying. We're also working on like getting the students to talk to adults about their experiences 'cause sometimes they don't want to talk to the adults about the stuff. They don't want to bring it up with an adult 'cause they think that they might get in trouble for it. But it goes back to what Olivia was talking about, getting students more comfortable to talking with any adult to making sure that they're comfortable letting go of their experiences and making sure that they're heard. So making sure that students are heard is a very big important part to what we're doing right now to make sure that everyone is getting their point across and everyone is being heard and no one is being forgotten along the way. And back to what I was saying before, the mean and polite and bullying, some students, they don't know what is what. So it's basically putting a mirror up to the people that are saying it. This is what you're doing. This is how we feel about it. You shouldn't do it anymore. It's not something we like is a really big part 'cause sometimes they don't even know what the heck they're doing wrong. And they need to know, otherwise they're just gonna continuously do it and there's not gonna be a stop to it. That was it. So back to Olivia.
Thank you. Um, another thing that uh our our school has been looking at as a whole and um Mr. Mead has talked to our equity team about is the application process for ITech, which has pretty much been consistent for the the last many years. We look at the zip codes in our area, look at the demographic in the zip code, you know, what is the population in this specific area? And then we pull a designated number of students for each zip code based on the the population in that area. However, we're looking at different ways that we can, we can sort of define who and the quantity of students from what area so that it might improve our our demographics as a school in a more uh effective way, in a way that will allow more students of color, more underrepresented groups in our community to be given the opportunities that people at ITech are given and to create more of a diverse environment at ITech. So we got a, got to look at that sort of outline for the new application processes that we're looking at and give our feedback, you know, give our piece on how it might be effective and how it might not be. How we might improve it ourselves, what our concerns are, what questions we have for it, sort of things like that just to create an open conversation about um how we can improve our school and diversity and things like that. And then Malia, if you wanna take over again?
Yeah, thank you, Olivia. Um, another part that we try to focus on is the student panel. So making sure that people that don't go to the equity meetings or that don't want their names tied to certain problems, they'll talk to our representatives. And there's a representative for each grade. And each grade, they don't exactly interview people like go around and interviewing, but we're trying to get to that point. It's something that we're working on currently. But whenever they go out or they hear an issue with a friend or honestly, whenever they go out and they hear an issue at all, they bring it up in our meetings, making sure that people are being heard, even if they don't want to bring it up to a teacher or they don't feel that sense of confidence yet. Another thing we're working on, um, we want to make sure that they're still getting heard and make sure that the problems are still getting fixed. Something is happening about it. So the students don't feel like nothing's gonna work, nothing's gonna happen. Or um things like depression or anxiety start kicking in. So um, having those people to stand up for the students that don't exactly wanna participate in our equity team or don't want to talk to the adults is another huge part of our equity team at ITech. So that's it for me. Thank you.
And then just to jump in really quick, I forgot to mention when I was talking about the application process, but it is And then just to jump in really quick, I forgot to mention when I was talking about the application process, but it is convenient that um, Malia just mentioned the, the student panels, because another thing we wanted to address with the student panels and with reaching out to students is looking at our sixth grade population of specifically girls. Because um, we have seen that our demographic doesn't necessarily properly represent um, both, both genders. There is a bit of a, a difference there and we want to look at how our program can be, how our outreach can improve the number of, of girls that feel um, that feel like our program is appealing or that, that feel that they could be comfortable at our program. So we're looking at um, really talking to, to the student body, you know, uh, sixth grade girls who, who really just went through the application process and who might still have sort of, sort of that feedback of how, you know, how they discovered ITech. How it was presented to them, you know, why really they decided to join our program. Um, and then I think that is all, um, Malia mentioned earlier on in the presentation that we really are focusing on giving, um, you know, those underrepresented students uh, more of a voice, you know, we're looking at how, how education programs can more suit neurodivergent students. How those education pr- um, programs might fall short for, for students with different learning abilities and, and different learning styles. We're looking at how our, our largely white administration and faculty can really improve from, from listening more intently to students of color and how they perceive, perceive situations with identity-based bullying and how they perceive the, the uh, reparations and like the sort of um, I don't know how to word it, but just how, how we handle um, situations with students of color and, and how they are treated or certain things that they might fall victim to or something like that. Um, yeah.
Right. Thank you, Malia and Olivia. Appreciate uh, what you've shared this evening. Um, Elijah is gonna share, um, and Elijah's school has uh, used um, a slightly different strategy for elevating uh, student voice. And so he's gonna um, share with us tonight. Thank you, Elijah.
Hello y'all, my name's Elijah. So my school doesn't have a student-centered equity team, but we do have advisory and SEO, uh, social emotional learning. And that mainly focuses on uh, bias, prejudice, um, equality and how it affects the people around you and how you judge others. And it's really, really powerful because it has like that community sense where you're gonna be heard by the faculty and staff. But then also your fellow students and fellow peers about uh, how they feel about the issues and whatnot. Our school has pretty good diversity, uh, and I don't think there's really like opportunities that are missed at our school specifically, but ours, I would say isn't a anomaly compared to other schools. Cause their school only has about eighty students, if that. It's a really, really, really tiny demographic compared to, you know, the VPS as a whole. Uh, but I think it leads by example, um, with that period in time, uh, you know, students being able to say what they need to say uh, about how they're really feeling and then uh, actions being taken, you know, uh, to what they said. Which is, you know, brings up a lot of discussion and communication, uh, building those student relationships with teachers. Which is also uh, an anomaly of how close we are with our teachers, because your class sizes can be sometimes like five people. And yeah, that's mainly uh, how I feel about that. As a person of color, uh, I don't feel like, again, any opportunities have been missed. If anything, I've had more opportunities because I'm a person of color at our school. Uh, and yeah.
All right. Thank you, Elijah. Appreciate you sharing as well. Uh, thank you to uh, Andre and Darby for your support and um, of course, thank you to our students. Um, Board of Directors, do you have any questions for us?
I just wanna know if Olivia's coming for our jobs.
Real, she's taking those real, real.
Yeah, seriously. You got a lot of stuff on your plate, Olivia.
You guys killed that presentation.
Could not handle your job right now.
I don't know. Very well done. I, I appreciate all the perspectives that um, you, all three of you were able to give us. And um, it just made me feel like we're really moving in the right direction and that while we're not all the way where we want to be with listening to student voice. I am just, my heart is full listening to you guys talk about how you're being listened in your building. How you're being listened to in your building and also the strength with which you're willing to advocate for not only yourself, but for the other people you're building. You're pretty amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elijah, what school did, what school do you go to? Did I miss that?
I go to Vancouver Flex Academy. It's behind the sky zone near the DCP.
Perfect. Thank you.
I had one question, um, maybe for Janelle or Andre. There were eighty percent, uh, I think seventy or eighty percent of the schools have some sort of student advisory group. Is that including our younger, our elementaries?
Yes, uh-huh, that does include.
I assume that involves a little bit more adult facilitation.
Yes, absolutely. And Andre may wanna, may wanna speak to that.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the, that's where the bulk of our remaining schools are to get to a hundred percent is at the elementary level. Um, cause yeah, it's, it's obviously as the students are more mature. It's easier to have the student uh, advisory teams at the high school and middle school level. And so that's why we're not at a hundred percent quite yet, because of the elementary is the trickier part. Um, but there, we still get good information from the elementaries and it does take more facilitation.
No, I appreciate it. Um, I just want to thank the students tonight. You did excellent and it was very um, very enlightening. It's great to see the work that's going on in the school. So thank you. Um, so often when we have, we talk about student voice, it's really focused around secondary only or high school only. So I think it's great that we are reaching out and including as many of our elementary voices as possible. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, team. Appreciate the presentation and the update and like so many of these, these are check-ins and points in time. So there, there definitely a, a, a progression here, um, that we're uh, wanting to continue to reflect back to you at a board level of how your decisions and your goal setting is rippling across the district. And so certainly you've heard from the student advisory at the district level, which some of these folks are participants on. Um, but you're seeing now that cascade at the school level, um, and really support Andre and Janelle's uh, and appreciate their leadership with it and our equity coaches, as was referenced earlier in the presentation, that are working directly with the administrators. So um, thank you all. Uh, if there aren't any other questions about this part of the agenda, I'll move us to our third item. All right, um, so uh, the school board recently uh, attended the Washington State School Directors Association Conference, um, which was held this year in Spokane. Uh, so number one, thank you directors for taking the time to do that. I know that it's time away from your family and, and your work, um, and we really appreciate the opportunity to learn together. Um, and we also had some district staff attend um, as well. Uh, you, I, I think just to tee this up for you, I think the theme of the conference is very similar to the theme that we approached this year with of belonging. Uh, and we even had an opportunity as, as Janelle and Andre referenced, the book study that's going on. We uh, had a full day where we were working with the authors uh, uh, around um, their research and their work and um, and ideas that they have to, to really impact students' experiences in school systems. Uh, so for me, that was definitely a highlight uh, of the conference. Um, but it's always important for us after the conference to just have an opportunity to discuss and share learning and takeaways and uh, and things that you would like us to continue to focus on um, as we move forward. So I will stop talking now and throw it to Director Barros's way first and then uh, we can have a little discussion about the conference.
Perfect. Um, well, my biggest takeaway is, um, there were fabulous keynotes. Um, and then I, I primarily attended the breakout sessions that um, fit within kind of my focus, which is around um, special education, inclusion, um, or mental health. Um, and so I got a lot of great um, resources. I went to one session um, about um, suicide prevention and making more culturally responsive and um, the discussion and the people in, that were attending. Um, kind of were just doing a share out of lots of different resources and I was frantically scribbling them down. Um, just to have different ideas of resources that we can use within our community. Um, yeah, the um, some of my other big takeaways, I was looking through my notes, um, one of our keynotes. Um, he talked about the difference between looking and seeing, um, asking who am I before uh, what is your why? So looking at I before why. Um, and having cultural humility, understanding we don't necessarily know everything that there is to know about everyone. Um, and one of the previous keynotes had talked about, um, we are very unpracticed at some of these conversations about race and um, differences. And so it was just really, it was just, it was a good time for kind of just taking, taking things in. Um, those were some of my biggest takeaways. I'll turn it over to, to others for some of their things.
Um, I'll just speak briefly, but I enjoyed the sessions I attended. Um, I think it, it's so fascinating to meet with directors from districts all across the state and to the so many um, similarities and the struggles and the questions that we're asking and just the learning from peer districts across the, um, across the state. Um, I know highly capable of something that we're reviewing um, as a district this year and so many um, similar conversations are being had and, and lots of um, really thoughtful ideas about how to serve our students as equitably as possible. Um, I also honestly just really enjoyed the time with our cabinet, um, because we don't often have um, more casual discussions around the work that we're doing. So that was nice.
I was gonna just say that um, one of my positive take, takeaways was I felt like at a lot of the sessions, that uh, when they started talking about what they were, how they started and what they were doing. I'm like, oh, we're, we're already at that point. Like we've been discussing that. We've, we've been studying that. We've got that on our to-do list and I felt very good about where we are as a district. And um, to kind of piggyback on Director Sprawl's um, comment about having the cabinet there. Um, it was so neat to have the whole team there, not just us. Uh, because we don't do this job by ourselves and to have the, the rest of the team there and to like talk about a few things like, did, is this what I'm, I think this is what we're doing. Is that what we're doing? And being able to bounce ideas and ask questions of each other. And the, the look on other school districts faces when we said, oh, and our, our, most of our cabinet, you know, a lot of our cabinets here and they're like, what? It's like, yeah, because we're a team and it just felt really good to have that sense of belonging together.
I'll go ahead and jump, oh, sorry, Sandra, you can go. Go ahead, Wendy. Hi. Uh, I don't know that I necessarily have anything like super groundbreaking or revealing to share, other than just to kind of reiterate. Um, I agree Kathy, the value of having um, so our cabinet members there was, was huge. That was super, I mean, it was just wonderful to be able to have those conversations, but also to know that we're kind of all experiencing and getting the same information at the same time, kind of um, uh, sharing that experience together has a lot of value to it. Um, one of the things that I think that resonate, and this is true every year, um, but this year as well, is that the, the sessions are put on by, by other school districts in Washington State. These are other, other districts that are doing some really cool things and it's exciting to hear like different ways of thinking about things and trying new things and to be able to, to talk to those, those board directors and the superintendents and get more information about like, how did you do that? And also just to see like, yeah, the, these, these things are possible. Like we can do things in a different way and learn from each other. Um, so I think that, that's always one of my favorite parts of, of WASDA is just learning from these other districts and seeing what they're doing. And I went to a whole wide variety of, of um, sessions on, on a wide variety of topics. And some of it, you know, I listened to and thought, well, that doesn't really, I don't know that that would really work for Vancouver. We're a very different sort of district. But then there are other things, I'm like, huh, I think maybe we should, we should be thinking about this or maybe, or talking about some of these things. So um, just a lot of wonderful experiences and I agree also Tracy, the, the keynote speakers were, were fantastic. Um, and also very encouraging in um, kind of reinforcing the work that we have been doing um, and validating a lot of the things that we were doing.
I echo all my board directors' uh, remarks and that, but for me is also, um, this conference was a little bit different, different for me, um, compared to last year. Cause I got to uh, work at the conference as well. So I'm, I'm part of the WASDA Leadership Consultants. Um, so we got to take on and do some of the equity trainings, so it's more as a capacity of room support. And for our team. And so it was really, I really enjoyed the conference to get to know so many other directors, but also um, spend time with board directors that I've gotten to know from across um, the state, um, board directors of color. And so that to me was being able to spend time with them and learn from them. And I think getting to, to hear their wisdom and their advice um, and how a lot of us are really going through the same issues and how we can all support one another. And that was really my biggest takeaway, was really feeling like I belonged in a different space. Um, I think in true, within my own district and outside of the district, be, feeling like I belong in that capacity as well.
I appreciate the comments and um, Kathy, you unmuted, was there something you wanted to add?
Oh, I was just, it was silly, but I just wanna recognize that, that, that final keynote speaker of the day was from my alma mater, William Mary. And uh, he also graduated the degree in elementary ed for William Mary. So I just wanna shout out to my, my old school. And he was amazing. So that's it.
It's fun when we make connections with learning, right? And that's, that's, I, I think that's a, a great point maybe to end the night on Kathy. Because when the students were talking in the work that Janelle and Andre and others are leading is we want kids to see themselves in, in the work and then the learning. Um, and just like you saw yourself and, and made a connection with that speaker, it, it makes you kind of pay attention differently, right? And um, and that's to, I think Kyle's question earlier around the PLC. It's always an evolution of, of our curriculum and our, and the teaching strategies that we're using. And so this is definitely a journey and not a destination. And um, we are learners as well, a, a, as the team that Jim and Carrie referenced, you know, the board superintendent team in how we support our staff and our, our students and our families. So um, feel like it kind of came full circle with that comment and, and the content that we had um, tonight. So uh, thank you for uh, board members engagement. Um, there's always some follow-up items related to the conference. You know, a conversation that you might've had, like you referenced Wendy, or maybe this is something that we could learn from, from this district. And so as those come up, um, I, I know that you know how to get that information to me and uh, let me know if there's some follow-up that you would like to see. So uh, with that, Director Barros, I think um, that's it for our agenda tonight. We do have an executive session. Um, I would anticipate about thirty minutes in the executive session. And, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Perfect. Thank you. That was gonna be my question, how long you anticipated the executive session? So um, with that, that is all for our agenda for our study session tonight. Um, we are going to be recessing this meeting, um, to go into an executive session. Um, the purpose of that is personnel to assess the uh, performance of a public employee. Um, there will be no action to follow. Um, and so when we return to this study session, uh, we will just be adjourning. There will not be any action. So um, it is six forty. uh we will just be adjourning. There will not be any action. So um it is six forty, as Dr. Snell said, we anticipate about thirty minutes. Um so we will return um to adjourn after that. Uh with that, we are in recess. Thank you. All right, we are back from our executive session. It is seven twelve PM and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.